You can throw stuff at us like that.
It may be more positive, I'm not sure. But, you know, I think this is the fifth month that y'all have had council meetings since I left, and I just appreciate all that you do, and wanted you to know that. Let's have a prayer. Father, before we start this meeting tonight, we just want to recognize you as sovereign over all things, including this government as well as all governments. Well, we just ask that all of our government leaders then look to you for guidance and wisdom and all the decisions that they have to make, regardless of whether they're large or small. We realize that your wisdom should go through the elected officials in making the right decisions. With all that, Lord, we're just thankful for this council and mayor and staff that are meeting here tonight. We recognize the difficulties sometime of the decisions, but realize that all these people have your interest in mind and the interest of all the citizens of Monroe, and for that, we give thanks. So, we just ask you to be with them tonight in all that they do, because we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Larry sat on this council for 12 years, Larry? 12 years. He's been a strong member at Monroe First Baptist. I appreciate you coming in. Thank you. We call this meeting in order of the City Council of May 14th, 2024. It is just a little bit past six. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Let the record reflect that all members of the council are present. Welcome, Greg. I do have one change to the agenda. We're going to have the Teen Advocacy Board next month. So, other than that, I need a motion for the approval, please.
To approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. The consent agenda this month is the council minutes and executive session minutes from April 9th, January Historic Preservation Commission, and the March 14th DDA and Convention of Visitors Bureau minutes. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Samms.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Tonight, we have this nice young lady in the crowd who is wearing a crown. Emily, would you come forward, please, for me? She's a junior, an upcoming junior at Georgia Gwinnett and studying early childhood education. She is Miss Irish Capital, and the Irish that we're talking about is Dublin, correct?
Yes, Dublin, Georgia.
Okay. Tell me just a tad about it.
You want to know a little bit about the Miss America Organization?
Sure.
All right, well, Miss America Organization is basically a scholarship competition for young ladies from teenagers all the way to about 27 years old, for girls that are in school right now that are needing financial assistance. And I really love this organization. It's not just about the pageantry of like the beauty of it and the glamour, it's about the sisterhood and the friendships that you acquire over time and the confidence that you have built over time.
And you'll be competing, Ms. Georgia, in the fall, correct?
Yes, in June.
Oh, that is awesome.
Yes.
Her talent is singing, as she has volunteered to sing the National Anthem for us. Have the flag right here behind me. You want to kind of step to that side, maybe, and kind of keep an eye on it and an eye on the crowd? Belt away, please. Thank you so much. I'm going to read this proclamation, I'm going to give it to you, and then...
And then I have a small thank you.
I'm sorry?
I have a small thank you to also say out.
Oh.
I forgot to say that earlier.
You go first.
You go.
Okay. This is proclamation from the City of Monroe, Georgia. Whereas more than one in five U.S. adults live with a mental illness, and over one in five youth ages 13 to 18, either currently or at some point during their lives, have had a serious, seriously debilitating mental illness. In about one in 25 United States adults' lives, U.S. adults lives with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, major depression. Whereas 55% of adults with a mental illness have not received any treatment. God bless you. 5.44% of adults experience severe mental illness, with 12.1 million adults, 4.8%, having reported serious thoughts of suicide. Whereas in Georgia, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for children aged 10 to 17, and approximately 94% of these suicides were preventable. Whereas there's hope for all through the efforts of organizations like NAMI, Georgia National Alliance for Mental Illness, and Emily Emmons, Miss Irish Capital's Community Service Initiative. Your mind is your business, keep it healthy. Whereas the National Alliance for Mental Illness, Georgia's mission empowers affiliates to provide advocacy, education, support, and public awareness so that all individuals and families affected by mental illness can build better lives. Whereas the National Alliance for Mental Illness, Georgia envisions a Georgia where all people affected by mental health illness live healthy, fulfilling lives supported by a community that cares. Whereas Ms. Emily Emmons, Miss Irish Capital, is working to promote mental health for all through therapy, medication, appropriate levels of sleep, and exercise, and a strong support system. Emily wants to encourage people to know it's okay to not be okay. Now, therefore, I, John S. Howard, by virtue of my authority vested as mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote identification and treatment of mental health. And witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe to be affixed this 14th day of May 2024. John S. Howard. Thank you so much.
So, I would like to thank you so much for having me here tonight for the proclamation. It is time that we get the word about mental wellness, and I am thankful for the City of Monroe for supporting this vision of mental health for all. It is okay to not be okay, and we must remove the stigma associated with mental illness and start the dialogue to educate the community about these issues. I look forward to working toward that day when everyone can build better lives. Again, thank you for all that you do.
We appreciate you coming in. Thank you so much, and that was just beautiful singing.
Thank you.
I think we have no public comment tonight, as that was handled early. Moving to the city administrator report, please, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to note, I think all of you know this, the past few weeks have been really transformative for downtown Monroe. We've had several new businesses open their doors, and of course, our Town Green, we held our first couple of events there, the opening event at the end of April, and then our first Friday concert was held there. Had about 3,000 people, which was a really good manageable crowd for our first concert there. Really, the logistics are just so much easier on staff at the Town Green. But several years ago, you know, the council at the time, councils at the time, had visions of broadening downtown. How do we expand and reach the other corners other than just Broad Street? With the Town Green coming to fruition, that's really done that. And the addition of the splash pad, we opened that recently. It's just really nice to see so many children and families out just utilizing the Town Green in a passive and respectful manner, and we hope to continue doing great projects like that in the future. Also, I want to recognize our gas department, Rodney Middlebrooks, and Brian Pittman and all his guys. They recently went to their Gas Authority Conference, and they were awarded the 2023 National Gas Enterprise Growth and Development Award. This is in recognition of a special project or initiative, and this is for the Gotham Greens Project. As some of you know, we've been really expanding our gas system and going out there and being able to serve Gotham Greens with a pretty significant gas load, and probably more on the way, was really recognized as one of the top programs in the state. So, hats off to them. Good job.
Congratulations, Rodney.
(applause). That's a very good summary, Mayor.
Are there any questions for Logan? Thank you, Mr. Probst. Chris Bailey.
Thank you, sir. Community Cleanup Day, we had April 20th. It was probably about our second biggest that we've had over the last six, seven years that we've done this. We had 75, 76 volunteers roughly that day, and we picked up almost 1,300 pounds of trash on roadsides, parks, cemeteries, in different areas. So, it was a well-attended event, and I was proud of it. I've talked about hangars at the airport and the statewide study that's been going on for probably a couple of years now. We were actually located in the region in the state of Georgia that is in the biggest demand for hangar space, and currently has the biggest gap between actual aircraft-owned and space to store aircraft. So, currently, what we're hoping for is that the state is putting together a different and new type of funding mechanism that they can hopefully give us opportunity to apply for so that we can build additional hangars at our airport, others in this region, to create the capacity for the needs that's out there. Logan had mentioned the Town Green grand opening. We actually had a little over, what, 1,700 people, I think, at the grand opening was the peak of that event, so that was pretty well-attended. And then he had mentioned a little over 3,000 at the first Friday night concert. I was going to touch, too, our Flower Festival, our Blooms Festival, that's June 15th. We currently have over 180 applications to attend that as a vendor. So, that will be, in large part, much larger than festivals in the past that we've had. This will be our fifth year, and typically, I think last year, we had about 110 vendors, maybe tops. And to have that many applications already that will start vetting and going through and figure out spacing along with downtown businesses that will also set up on the street, that should be a much larger event than we've ever had before, so that's what we're after. Let's see, I wanted to touch, too, our stormwater master plan that we're working on currently with policy, ordinance changes, a fee structure, and then our capital projects is still working its way through. I would say we're about halfway through in putting that list of everything together that we'll eventually bring before council and discuss everything prior to putting anything in place. Next month, June 17th through the 21st, will be Worker, will be Waste and Recycling Workers' Week. We'll have a proclamation. That's always the week that we celebrate. Our public work staff primarily are solid waste and streets side that do this kind of every day, so that'll be on the agenda. And then, from a procurement standpoint, we've been working through Phase Two submissions of our TAP grant, RFQ that was out, and then we're revisiting our Phase One of another TAP grant, and then our contract for the taxiway rehab was actually just executed within the office today, so hopefully, we see construction on the taxiway rehab sometime, maybe in June, early July. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Chris, on the taxiway rehab, is the airport going to have to be shut down at any point in time?
No, sir. No, sir, it will remain open. And one thing else I wanted to throw out there, and, boy, you might kill me. Our Town Green, we managed to procure a Christmas tree that we hope will be on Town Green this coming Christmas that is 42-foot tall. So, we have got to go and pick that up and get everything situated and figure out how we're going to stand that up at the Town Green, but we're going to figure it out, and I figure we've got until December to do it. So, it's nice, it comes from the forum in Peachtree City, or Peachtree Corners. We just happened to kind of randomly find it. They were getting rid of one they had, so it's fully lit, fully decorated, and is about 12 pallets, I believe.
20.
Almost 20 pallets.
Of just limbs.
Yes, of just limbs. So, that'll be a cool addition to the Town Green at Christmas time, and then Ms. Sandy's got some plans, too, to tie into the Christmas month, to add a little flair to the Town Green. Excited about that. Sorry.
Are there any other questions?
(laughing).
Thank you, Chris. Moving to department reports, Mr. Croy, tell us more about the Christmas tree.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't want to talk about Christmas right now, so. Something exciting, so we've been talking about the restoration of the exterior of the visitor center here in downtown. That actually started yesterday, so our contractor started moving in and staging the materials, and probably this week and next week, they're going to be working on pressure washing the outside and getting it cleaned, getting it ready for that process. We're excited they're here. That's probably, like I've stated last month, probably going to be about a two-month project. We continue to work with street scans to collect all the street sidewalks and sidewalk ramp data through the City of Monroe. Me and Brad have worked a lot this past month helping with street scan, building our GIS layers for them so that they can move forward with that data collection. So, they're working on that. Let's see, I did, we did receive approval from AT&amp;T on our proposed location here in downtown for an antenna or their equipment to help with their signal here in town. So, we're going to start working with them on their agreements and negotiating with them. Our Blaine Station RFQ, questions are going to be due next week on the 23rd, and that RFQ will come to a close next month in June, so we're looking forward to seeing the submissions for that. And we have, we've been working on two box hangar agreements at the airport that hopefully we'll have before you next month for your approval. And if you have any questions of anything on that or anything in my report, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Croy?
Thank you, Chris. Moving to economic development and code, Logan, do you want to take both?
Yeah, I'll hit a couple of things here on the code side. So, we, for April, we had no planning commission items, thus nothing on your agenda tonight. For the May, there are two items before the planning commission. One will be a variance for a minimum in public road frontage at 802 North Broad, and then a de-annexation at Zero Highway 78. That's about nine acres. So, for reference, that's across the Alcoa River Bridge, and if you're heading towards Loganville, it'll be on the left side. It's just a parcel that was annexed in many, many years ago, and there's no great way to serve it with utilities being across the river, so that applicant has, is putting in for a de-annexation, so you'll see that in a couple of months. Let's talk about city marshal for a minute. So, we've kind of been on a kick to remove a lot of signs. I don't know if you've noticed, there's a proliferation of signs, non-political signs. There's a lot of those, but just signs in general, and we're going to be on a kick to kind of clean up the streets. They are a major eyesore, number one. Number two, they also clog up our stormwater system every time we have major rain events or storms, so our marshal's working on that, and actually, a lot of our departments are going to kind of join forces to take up as many signs as possible, illegal signs out there in the right of way.
How long are those signs held, and where are they held, if anybody wants to pick them up?
Yeah, traditionally, we've been taking them out to Public Works and holding them. How long have you been holding them? Just a big old pile. Yeah. On the economic development side, we are, Brian, out there in the audience, we're working on a hotel feasibility study that will hopefully gain some traction to land a proper flagged hotel somewhere here in town. There's challenges up there in the Monroe Pavilion area. I won't get into all that tonight, but it looks like there's plenty of opportunity somewhere in our general downtown area, should a hotel want to scope us out. The hard part is really just trying to tell the tale, because they see a town of 15,000 people, and that's always, that's not always enough, but we have a good story to tell, and the hotel feasibility study that we're working on should certainly help that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Probst? Thank you, Logan. Moving to finance, Beth?
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the finance report as of March. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Maudette Jenkins, our external auditor, has finished the audit. We do have a few minor budget amendments later in the meeting to be approved. This is so they can finalize their reports that they will present to y'all at next month's meeting. I also want to, Amy Lee Hammond is not here tonight, she had something, but I want to congratulate her on being named the Customer Service Manager. I'm sure a lot of y'all have seen and dealt with Amy over the years, and I think she'll be a great asset to that position in our customer service. That's all I have. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you, Beth. Moving to Chief Dykes, fire report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you in your packet the March incident data, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about those, but since our last meeting, a couple of pretty big things, significant things have happened. For one, the last week of April, a group of us went to the E1 production facility in Ocala, Florida, to do a final inspection on our fire engine, and it arrived in Monroe the first week of this month. So, currently, it is at Fireline in Winder, excuse me, where they are fabricating some custom shelving, equipment mounts, and brackets, and that type of thing to take care of our equipment that we mount on that. But we are very close to putting that in service, but the main thing is, we are in possession of that truck, it is now on city insurance, it is a real thing, two years and several months later, from initially approving that and ordering that. And the other thing I wanted to touch base on, we were able to partner with the county and host a hazmat technician course out at GUTA over the past month, and I was just going to say that that is such a phenomenal facility for that type of training. I was jealous, because when I took that class about 15, that course about 15 years ago, we didn't have access to all those props and everything else that are at GUTA, but that was an excellent usage of that facility for both the classroom portion and had instructors from different places, including chemists that came in from Takeda to go over some of the chemistry of hazardous materials with the folks that were doing it, but it was our, some of our personnel, the county personnel, and a few other departments that did that, and it was such a success that we're looking at doing that again in the fall, as we try to get more hazmat technicians throughout the county so that collectively, we could respond to something of relative significance without having to rely on counties, bordering counties in further away. But just wanted to, you know, touch base on that, that GUTA is an excellent facility for that, that may not have been what it was intended for, but those props are fantastic for that type of training. And happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chief Dykes. Dykes, are there any questions? Appreciate it. Moving to Chief Watts.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, but this is an opportunity for us to truly brag on our law enforcement agency. Logan and I had our meeting just a couple of weeks ago, and this was some numbers that were very impressive to me. So, you know, we changed from doing the uniform crime reporting to NiBRA, which is national incident-based reporting. And so, this tracks all our numbers of total incidents that happened in the city, the types of incidents like crimes against people, crimes against society, crimes against property. And then doing that, right before I came in tonight, I did a comparison of January of 2023 to May 14th of 2023, then January of 2024 to May, to today's date, and the difference is just, is this right here. So, that same time span in 2023, we had 552 total offenses. This year, we've only had 236 total offenses. Our clearance rate last year on all those cases was 32.79%. This year's clearance rate in that timeframe is 54.66%. These are numbers here that I think are very impressive, and I want to brag on is crimes against persons, last year was 134, this year is only 68, which is down 49%. Crimes against property, last year was 291, this year is 105, that's down by 63%. Crimes against society last year was 127, this year is 63, that's down by 50%. So, I mean, that's just a testament of the organization we have and being full staff and having qualified personnel patrolling the streets out here. Now, the only numbers that I will report that are up is our calls for service, and something that was significant is this, is last year, assault against law enforcement officers was two, this year already is eight. So, good job on our men and women that wears the badge out here, and I just want to take that opportunity to brag on them, and those are very impressive numbers.
Thank you so much, Chief Watts. Are there any questions? Moving to Mr. Smith, solid waste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mattress update, good news, we had a big drop-off from last month. We picked up 102. Still didn't recover all of the fees for the pickups, cost us about $1,800 for not getting them all, but we did have a big drop-off, almost close to 70 mattresses compared to last month. We added a couple of, I want to report a couple of tables. The first one is a transfer station report. Compared to 2022, we're trending down, we're down 36% compared to 2022. Over the last year, we're down 6%. So, that means that, of course, the increase in rates in 2023 and '24 is pretty much caused the impact. The City of Monroe report is a quarterly report that we are, we have a modest goal of reducing our waste by 25%. First quarter, we're only down, we kind of diverted 9%. So, basically, what that means is the more waste we're generating, the higher our cost is going to be. So, that's the reason why we want to kind of reduce as much as we possibly can. On the mattress deal, we did get our trailer back in April, April 22nd, so that's going to help cover the cost of getting rid of quite a few. Last thing I got is the holiday schedule for Memorial Day. We are going to push all the routes back one day. Let's see, Monday customers, there would be no collection. Tuesday customers will be picked up on Monday. Oh, no, that's wrong. On Tuesday, Monday customers will be picked up, that's May 28th, May 29th. Tuesday customers will be picked up on Wednesday. Wednesday customers picked up on Thursday, and Thursday customers will be picked up on Friday. Take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Danny. Mr. Still, Streets and Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without getting into the details of the report, I'd like to highlight a couple of things that we've been doing citywide. It's been a pretty big initiative to repair some edruts citywide. There's been a ton of those pop-up recent, I think a lot of it's got to do with the amount of rain that we've gotten, and the shoulders are just softened up. We've done a significant amount of that throughout the city using our millings that we collect every paving season from L-Mig project. Now, we can produce our own millings. We received last week our new skid steer loader with a coal planer attachment, and that's going to completely transform the way we do patching it, so we'll be a lot more efficient, a lot cleaner look, a lot more even surface to get away from some of the bad patches. It will enable us to give a cleaner, better-looking, better-riding patch throughout the city, and we probably will have it in service. Probably go target Marable Street initially as part of the L-Mig project with it, cut our teeth out there with that machine out there. Looking forward to getting it going and seeing exactly... Cut our teeth out there on, with that machine out there. Looking forward to getting it going and seeing exactly how efficient that process becomes. So it's not as fancy as a new fire truck. We're glad to have it and glad to be having it in use. Other than that, the guys are just, they're out patching potholes, utility cuts, taking care of the ride ways, doing their day-to-day jobs. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions about the report or anything else as far as that goes.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Still? Jeremiah, I appreciate how responsive they are. It's really looking good out there. Thank you. Moving to Mr. McGuire, telecom report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it pretty brief. As a whole, the telecom department's rocking on, just doing what we do on, on a, on a daily basis. It was relatively quiet month, which is a good thing. But I do have a couple of things that I want to touch on here. We had probably the, the largest number of active fiber installations done this month. We've had in, in, in a good long time since we just started the big push. I was really excited because I was hoping to come here and say we have hit the fifty percent threshold, but it only went up by one percent. And that lets me know that we're still adding quite a few cable modem customers in areas where we don't have fiber available just yet. So we're still growing. Our total customer count's almost up to fifty-one hundred customers. That's, that's, we were at forty-three hundred when we started back in February of, of two thousand and twenty-three. So we are still growing. It's, it's still steady growth even in the non-fiber areas. So we just turned on a whole bunch of stuff north of town in April. The Highland Creek subdivision finally went live. Morgan's Crossing went live. Olive Cedar Ridge down that area just went live. So there's a lot of installations that are, that are forthcoming and these guys have been pretty busy. So we're still rocking along as, as we've been doing. Hopefully next month we'll hit that fifty month, that fifty percent threshold. I'm, I'm ready to be there. So we continue to do that. For the streaming TV product, it's, as I said last month, it's launched. We are getting lots and lots of phone calls on it. Lots of customers asking questions, lots of people inquiring about it. We've, we've picked up a handful of customers to start with, but I don't anticipate that those numbers will probably pick up real big until the, the crossover point of us cutting off the, the cable TV plant. We're still on track for that to be around the, the first week of August for that to happen. I expect sometime in July, we'll probably see a big uptick in, in those numbers there. Big question I always get, and I've covered this once before, is do we carry Bally Sports? Yes, we do. Tell everybody you know, we do carry Bally Sports. If you want to watch the Braves, it's there for you to watch because it's, it's hard to find on streaming platforms. So we're, all that's still trucking along pretty good. I know I mentioned his name a lot, but I have to take the moment to say congratulations to Eli Yater, who graduated from Athens Technical College with, as a Dean Scholar in, I hope I get this right, in, with a degree in applied sciences in the field of emerging technologies. So he is a, he's planning to head to Kennesaw State University, I think is where he's going next. And he's going to try to finish up there in a degree somewhere in the area of cybersecurity. But we're real proud of Eli and I had an opportunity to attend his graduation ceremony. So we're, we're real happy for him on that. And then last but not least, I just want to take a moment and really kind of brag, and I put in my report, I really want to brag on what I consider the, the young sung heroes of the telecom department. It was a quiet, it was a quiet month for us, but we had several events that happened. One being a tree that went down over in the Oak Ridge area, had gone down, took down a bunch of power lines, took down a bunch of telecommunications stuff. Steven Anderson heads our field division. He's in charge of the guys and he's got three guys that works under him. It's, it's Alex Moody, Brett Youngblood and William Merritt. And not only did Steven go over there to help assist them, but all four of those guys came back to work, jumped in those bucket trucks, went down there, spent about four and a half hours to help repair and put all those services back up, get everything going. And, and somebody even relayed to me that was there on site with them, said that was about as smooth as it could as possibly have gone. You know, stuff like that happens a lot and we don't really hear about it. We, we hear about it when it happens because everybody wants to know when their stuff's back up. But these guys really, they really bust their hump out there to help keep things running. Steven does an excellent job of making sure that our trouble tickets are getting knocked out in a, in a timely manner, very efficient. He's on top of that. And the second place I want to just kind of highlight is our construction crew, and that's led by Brandon Brown. Brandon is a large part of, of why most of our subdivisions and our fiber deployments with these contractors get taken and get handled and, and knocked out in such a time efficient manner and get spun up as fast as they do. He works real hard at that. And then twice in two separate instances, he had to track down a squirrel chew in a thirty-three mile fiber route between here and Oconee County. And you say, how do you do that? So you have to put a piece of equipment on there and it, it shoots and kind of gives you a ballpark of where to look. But it literally requires you getting in a truck, going up there and putting your hands on that wire and having to go down and find where it is. And in two separate instances, kind of along the same stretch of road, but in two different places, he had to do that and was out till dark. And even, you know, I included some pictures in there of that. And I just want to say hats off to those guys. I had an opportunity to ride with Steven the other day and we stopped at a call from, that somebody else was working on. While we were there making that repair, the neighbor came out from the house next door and was really just kind of bragging on our guys and said, you know, I've, I've dealt with this individual before. This, this guy really knows what he's doing. And it just makes me feel to know, good to know that these guys are out there representing the city like that. And I just, you know, they don't get a lot of recognition on a daily basis. And I just want to say, take my hats off to them and, and say how much here publicly, how much I appreciate what they do. And I'm, if you have any questions for me or anything, I'll be more glad to answer them for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McGuire? Any chance Eli's behind that glass?
He is. He's back there.
Hey, Eli, do you mind coming out for a second?
He's going to be so mad.
We want to embarrass you a little bit. How about this? Congratulations. So proud of you. We want to ask you to give a speech, but I, I really appreciate the job you've done. And Mrs. Dickinson is going to be just so thrilled that you graduated. Out of you. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Middlebrooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we just finished fiber, we just completed our first gas fiber joint trench for a subdivision. Rivers Edge is a hundred and five lots out on Michael Edgerson. Me and Mike teamed up and was able to install it with the gas main. And as far as I know, gas side, it went great. I guess, okay. But that was our first one. We'll be doing a lot of those in the future. The, we've completed the four inch gas main installed on seventy-eight. That was from Jim Doggs to the Piedmont industrial park. That was to provide some additional gas for Gotham Greens. Just didn't quite have enough for their usage. But that's complete. The pump station out at Michael Edgerson, Alcove River. We had a startup last week on it. That'll serve the hundred and five lots I mentioned earlier, plus the parcels along one thirty-eight, including the, the New Tokyo Restaurant. And then all our utilities have been installed to the YMCA property, so it's ready to go. And we're currently still relocating facilities along the bypass. And we'll be for another two or three months, I'm sure. But that's all I've got.
Are you feeling good with the way that's coming along? You feeling good with the way that's coming along?
Yeah, it's coming. It's just slow.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Thank you, Rodney. Moving to department requests, Mr. Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you have in front of you is a very rare opportunity to receive two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents from the state with no match required. This was, we were made aware in March that the governor and legislation had allotted two hundred and fifty million dollars for a local road assistance administration, basically a supplement on top of what they're already giving us through LMEG. Formulas were used just like, just as calculated through the LMEG program. So center lane miles is what determine how much you get of this. And there's supposedly no catch to it. So that's why I'm saying it's rare that G Doc gives back. And I'm, I'm loving the fact that they're giving us almost a quarter million dollars. And how we do that is, is up to us. We looked at several areas and decided upon McDaniel Street. And we'd probably get more calls out there for deterioration of the initial driving surface. It was on, and it still is on the list for part of our LMEG program as far as patching. That won't change. What this will allow us to do will go in, deep patch the areas that need to be deep patched as well as mill it down inch and a half, get rid of the bad asphalt that's on top. If you've ever been down through there, a lot of that stuff is just surface. And I, I feel really certain that we got a really bad batch of asphalt fifteen years ago when we paved that road. And it's just coming apart. So we'll mill it down, overlay it new. And this money will all but cover the entire expanse of that project. We're just seeking approval tonight to use this money on that street. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Have a, a motion? And a second? Motion by Mr. Thompson, a second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to new business, natural gas delivery service intergovernmental agreement, Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. For quite some time now, as the county had been working on their public safety complex, AKA the jail, we were trying to figure out the utility services. As you know, we won the electric load and the gas load. So these are competitive. And in order to install the gas and the, the specified loads they need for such a huge complex, it's going to take over almost two and a half million dollars to build this line. So we negotiated with Walton County that they will contribute one point five million dollars towards the high pressure gas line, which is, which is good for us because we actually also need those additional pressures and volumes out to the industrial park for future uses out there and actually current users as well. So for its part, the county has already approved this last week. And we're just asking that you do the same and we can start work on getting those bids out.
Are there any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. There's a second?
Second.
Give that a second to Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. The Monroe sign, Mr. Probst?
All right. So since nineteen ninety-three, everybody's been talking about the famous lighted Monroe sign. You have it in your packet, their little design. But we're trying to figure out what, what are we going to do with this sign if, if we can ever re-erect it? And, you know, it was a victim of the, the downburst in ninety-three. Since then, technology has come along and, and made it really infeasible to place atop the, the current Wayne Street water tower where it once stood. There's cell phone arrays and other, you know, radio equipment up there. So DDA has been kind of batting that around for a while. And you may be familiar with IMAC, local company. They're out of social circle technically, but they do a lot of work all over the southeast in metal fabrication primarily. And they have offered to build a replica sign for us next to old city hall in the, what's currently called the Hammock Park. And we would kind of make a monument out of it, right? So it'll be a lighted sign replica. And the original design was about eight feet. We're going to move it to about ten feet tall to try to keep people being able to easily access it and climb on it. There's some other logistics to work out with that. But ultimately, it's a great deal. They're going to build the, the sign for us, contribute all the labor. We just pay for the materials, which was estimated originally at fifty-five thousand. But I'm asking for seventy-five thousand dollars in materials out of the Splos Parks Fund. And that should cover anything like the extra, you know, two feet of brick, plus some of the concrete landing area shrubbery and whatever else we need to do to secure that, that area in addition to running some electrical to it. But all in all, that's a great deal that we at least have a, a local company like IMAC to offer their services for free.
Are there any questions, Mr. Probst? Hearing none, all entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm to approve. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye? All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to an appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Probst?
Before you are several Historic Preservation applicants. All are very well qualified. You have their backgrounds in your packet. I welcome any questions or if you have had a chance to review, we'll welcome a motion.
May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
I do have a nomination. But before I make that nomination, I want to say I looked at all the resumes. I know all of these people personally. I think all of them are qualified to serve in the position. I know all of these people have a real heart for the city of Monroe. But just looking at the objective criteria, I nominate Charles Chuck Bradley. And my reasons for nominating Mr. Bradley come down to a couple of things. One, he has a degree in architecture. I kind of overlooked the fact that he got it from the North Avenue Trade School. Or as some people call it, Georgia Tech. But putting that aside, that's really significant. The second thing is he is the only one of the applicants that actually lives in a historic house in one of our historic districts. He and others have moved to Church Street and live in that beautifully restored house at four hundred East Church Street. So I nominate Mr. Charles Bradley.
I have a motion on the floor to nominate Mr. Chuck Bradley. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you for volunteering. We're excited to have you as part of the team. Moving to budget resolution for the two thousand twenty-three budget amendments, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. These are the budget amendments that I mentioned earlier. I'm asking for your approval for the proposed series of end-of-year budget amendments, which comes to nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. This will increase revenues as well as an offset increase in expenses due to the way capital leases and finance purchases are recorded. This is due to a new requirement under GASB eighty-seven that came into effect last year. Adopting these amendments allows me to finalize the two thousand twenty-three financial statements and comprehensive annual financial, annual financial statements that will be presented to y'all next month by Maudette and Jenkins.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions for Beth? Hearing none, all entertain, wait, do we wish to have the resolution read? I'm not, not hearing anybody. I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve by Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye? All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you. Moving to the two thousand twenty-four National Opioid Fund Budget, Ms. Thompson?
This is for the two thousand twenty-four budget. So, and Paul can talk about this as well if y'all have questions. But we receive funds from the National Opioid Settlement. And we have to set aside a special revenue fund for this per our auditors. And in doing so, we set aside a line item in our general fund budget for these funds. So they're segregated. However, we have to furthermore put them in a special revenue fund. This is just setting aside those funds into that special revenue fund. And in doing so, we have to set up a budget for doing that. So this will be revenues and expenses, which will be a balanced budget of fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for two thousand twenty-four. fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions for Beth? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Timeout. I'm sorry, did it again. I'm not used to this, having the council. Would you like to have the resolution read? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, please. A motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye? All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, move through pretty quickly, um, district items. Uh, Ms. Malcolm?
I'd just like to thank, um, Lisa Reynolds and her mom and the C staff, Chris and Dwayne Day, for the beautiful, um, transplants on all of our, um, flower beds and flower boxes throughout town. They replaced everything last Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and they, they're looking beautiful.
They do a great job. Uh, Ms. Crawford?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sams?
Um, I am really excited to see all the kids and families out at the town green, the splash pad. I drove by there multiple times last weekend, and there were lots of people out there enjoying it.
It does look good. Thank you all. Uh, Ms. Brown?
Um, just want to thank all the citizens that came out on Community Cleanup Day last month and actually did a wonderful job, especially over at Young Pines, um, Stone Creek and Monroe Estates. It looks really good now and hoping to keep everything up. Also glad to see that, um, some people came out for Community Impact Day. Two houses went up and two people moved into their homes near South Madison and Van Broe. So very excited about that as well, so.
Thank you. Those Habitat Houses look great, Mr. Gregory. Will you want to tell us more about that?
I think that if you haven't, I actually was talking with Brad, and I don't know how many people have had a chance to go see any of the Habitat Houses, but if you have not had an opportunity to go by and check them out, I think you should. Because I think you will be quite impressed and, uh, then wonder how come you didn't start out with a Habitat House and move on. Because, uh, they certainly brighten up the places that they're in. And I'm very thankful that we're giving working men and women a chance to own a home and be able to, um, increase their family's chances of succeeding in the future. So very happy about that part.
Perfect. Anything else?
Yes, so Mr. Bailey or Mr. Crowley, not sure which. Um, I have received a request that, and I have not checked lately, but that we get pine straw put next to the, um, the trees. No, no, not church. Uh, it sounds like you've gotten that one already.
Don't bring that up.
No, next to, next to where we keep all the equipment and everything, close to the water plant, up through, uh, you know, where we keep materials and all that stuff. Just basically that, that side of town.
Oh, North Broad? Is that where you're talking?
Well, North Broad, yeah.
We just, we put mulch around all the trees.
Fantastic. That's what I was.
That was done, uh, by Chris Schmidt, actually by himself.
Wow.
That's right.
Week and a half ago.
Fantastic.
That's why he's walking kind of funny right now.
Right.
Yeah, he was doing it by himself.
And that's what I said. I said, I'm sure they've already got it taken care of.
True.
I don't know. What joke? And I'm, yeah, seriously worry about him.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one item that I do want to bring back and revisit. Unfortunately, I was hoping to do it in executive session, but I've been told by the attorneys that I can't. So I wanted all the council members here, just in case they needed to add anything. But I want to go back to the meeting that you had set up with, uh, the Tribune with, uh, Chairman Thompson. Uh, kind of put a black eye on the city, the way it was done. We are a city of ethics. I think you should have told him who was going to be at that meeting. I would hope that you wouldn't do something like that again. When you look around this table here, you've got all eight elected officials here with a wealth of knowledge, varying degrees. You've got two former mayors sitting here that's got twenty years' experience. You've got a city administrator that's got almost ten years' experience, and you've got a team of attorneys. I appreciate your passion, because I know it was probably not meant to be set up this way.
Right.
But it, it turned out bad. So I'm, my ask is, the next time you have a passionate plea to do something on the city's behalf, please get some advice from either Mr. Probst or the attorneys or anybody sitting at this table. Because this is something that, this was the wrong man to kind of ambush.
You are.
It hasn't gone away.
You're, you're exactly right. I've, I've talked to Patrick, uh, and apologized. It, it was a mistake. Uh, you know, it wasn't an intended ambush, and he knows that. And, but I also understand.
I appreciate it. It does have consequences, just.
Right.
Like I say, I appreciate your passion. I know we all want the Splosh to pass. We should have probably done a little bit better job earlier on just telling citizens what this Splosh money does. Has it done in the past? I know we can't go out and say, vote for the Splosh.
Right.
You know, we, we, I, we kind of dropped the ball on this going forward. It is a very important vote. And, you know, I hope everybody goes out and votes for it. It's not an attack. But, um, I just, if you would do that ask for me, I think everyone would appreciate it.
Yeah, you're, you're one hundred percent right. And I've, and I've talked to him and, and feel better about the relationship with him. Um, yeah, I, I like the guy. I mean, I wouldn't want to put any, I wouldn't want to put anybody into that, to that situation intentionally. So, yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that. Uh, Mr. Dickinson?
Mr. Mayor, I want to follow up on what Mr. Thompson said. And this is not a piling on, um, it's kind of, this is a difficult thing. I was asked what I knew about that meeting, and I think every member of this council was. And I think everyone else's answer was the same as mine. I didn't know about it.
Didn't know.
Till it came out in the press. And as Mr. Thompson said, you have a great passion for this city. But I wish you had talked with all of us first. I would have said, don't do that. That is the wrong approach. And I know you didn't intend for it to look the way it looked. But, you know, uh, one of the fundamental principles of our, uh, federal and our state constitution is absolute independence of the press. And none of us ever need to do anything that makes it look like we're trying to abridge that. I know that was not your intention. I know your heart. I know how much you love this city. But I think we all have a duty to make it clear to our citizens that, you know, and, and you've done it. I mean, you have apologized for it. And I know there was a lot more involved in it than you. I just, but, but like Mr. Thompson said, please consult.
I appreciate that. And, and to do what you know, uh, when I went and talked to him and, and apologized, and I said, look, I felt awful. We went through the texts that I sent to him, that I sent to the other mayors, went through them together, and, and, and at the end of the meeting, I said, you know, I said, Patrick, I'm, I'm not sure, looking back, that I would have had any contact with publisher of the paper anyway, no matter, no matter. But, um, yeah, you're correct. And I apologized to him, apologized to you. Thank you. So now it's my turn. Um, this afternoon, we did the ribbon cutting at Pilot Park, uh, for Evan Newsome. He was Eagle Scout, we recognized, uh, I believe, last month. Uh, Thursday night, if you've not replied to Beverly, uh, we have the Walton Municipal Meeting at the Wayfair. I hope you'll come. Uh, spouses are invited. Just let her know. Um, it's at seven o'clock, and we are having, uh, Chip Underwood, the new superintendent of Walton County Schools, uh, who will be speaking. Um, June eighteenth, we will welcome the, some students from the University of Liverpool. Uh, Brandy Walker with University of Georgia Global Studies Department, uh, has included us in her tours with them. Uh, they go to the big city, uh, in Atlanta, uh, there at the University of Georgia, and then they want a smaller town, uh, and, and we, we fit with what they do. Um, we confirmed fireworks on July fourth, uh, just this afternoon. Uh, the group that will be here for that one will have Africa in Athens. Um, they'll be here again on July twentieth. That's a Nelson Mandela, uh, Washington Fellows. They will have somewhere around fifteen thousand applicants for forty positions. Um, they come from Democratic Republic of Congo, Ivory Coast, Djibouti, Ethiopia, Ghana, Kenya, Liberia, Madagascar, Mali, Mozambique, Nigeria, South Africa, Tanzania, Uganda, Zambia, and Zimbabwe. Um, a little bit different, this group. Um, you have, uh, students from Liverpool. This group from, uh, from Sub-Saharan Africa are lawyers, uh, owners of football clubs, um, farmers, uh, had a fellow from the CDC last year. Uh, had one who's, uh, running sexual traffic, sex trafficking studies out of Madagascar. Um, so these folks are the real deal. I hope you'll, um, meet with me at the courthouse on the twentieth. Um, Kirkland will be with me. Uh, last year, we went to, to Athens and took them all out to dinner that, that following night before they left too, so.
And this is when?
This, uh, July twentieth. They will be here on the fourth for the fireworks, but that's just a, a random visit. Finally, you mentioned, uh, Amy Hammond as the new customer service manager. Uh, don't know if you've noticed, but Amy, with the exception of tonight, has been here at every single council meeting for probably the last three years. Uh, she's wonderful. Uh, she's, I've known her since we were teenagers. She's the perfect person for that job. Uh, so I'm excited for her. And now I need a motion to adjourn, please. We don't have a, wait, timeout. We don't have an executive session.
No need for that.
Okay, so moved, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Sams. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Chief Watts, I need you to meet Ms. Emmons.